And who need your comfort. Father, in the midst of all the busyness and the excitement, I pray that you'd help us focus not on what's under the tree, but the man who died on a tree, who is the only unfailing source of hope for us. Father, for the teachers and students of Tyler ISD, I pray for safety and protection, especially during their time away from school on our upcoming break. For the leaders of TISD, including my fellow board members, I pray for wisdom as we make decisions that impact the lives of students and our community. I pray all this in the name of my Savior, Jesus, in the power of your spirit. Amen.
Amen.
My friend allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank you for that Reverend Hager. We do have action coming out of executive session, and that is the approval of hiring of the principal of Bell Elementary. Do I have a motion on that?
Mr. President, it is my pleasure to recommend that we approve the employment of Tamroy Johnson to become the principal of Bell Elementary School.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Ms. Johnson, would you care to say anything for everybody? It looks like you have a big following here tonight. Come on up.
To President Washman, to our superintendent, Dr. Marty Crawford, and to each of you who make up this great board. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to stand before you on tonight to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to serve as principal of Bell Elementary, where we are building a family of leaders, one bear at a time.
All right. Go ahead.
Well, thank you. I'll go ahead and say, I feel like, you know, it's like we've watched you grow from teacher to assistant principal and all sorts of positions, all the way to principal, and it's great. I'm really proud of that we've been able to, you know, like we always talk about, grow one of our own into a leadership position, and we know you'll do good things over there. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm a previous Bell employee, proudly so, and received a great foundation as a teacher there, and I know that you're going to do great things because you have that great leadership ability and you have the love for students and for people. So I pray God's choices blessings upon you. I know you'll do great.
Thank you.
I would like to add, I've known Ms. Johnson for a very long time, seen her grow up and seen her in action at Bell Elementary as well, from working out at the university, and she is definitely qualified to do this job, and I'm just very proud of you. Thank you for your service to the district.
Thank you.
I'll just say that I've been a big fan since you were Landry's teacher at Woods, and I just texted him, he wanted me to tell you, you were an amazing teacher.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, congratulations, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our December District Student of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Itzel Mahia, a third grade student at Bell Elementary School. The Secondary Student of the Month is Dylan Welch, an 11th grade student at Wayne DeBoshear's Center for Exceptional Programs. And at this time, please join us as we watch a brief video about these two outstanding Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected based on 12 Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. These qualities lead to successful student outcomes both in and outside of the classroom. We would like to recognize Itzel Mahia, a third grade student at Bell Elementary, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Itzel exhibits Tyler ISD's learner profile characteristic of being a good communicator. She understands what it takes to be a good student.
What it takes to be a good student, what I think, is by listening, getting all the questions right, and by obeying the teacher.
Itzel likes reading and science, and enjoys being in the Target program for gifted and talented students.
What I like about Target is working together with different students from different schools and classes, and my teacher helping me with all my challenges.
Itzel amazes her teachers every day in the maturity and fluency of her verbal communication skills. Our secondary student of the month is Dylan Welch, an 11th grade student at the Boshears Center for Exceptional Programs. Of the district's many learner profile characteristics, Dylan exhibits great communication skills with the use of his voice output device. Dylan is very social and wants to talk to everyone. We recently visited with Dylan, and he shared several things about himself.
I go to school at Boshears.
Dylan, do you have any pets?
I have a dog named.
Are you a good student?
Yeah.
Dylan loves to share jokes and laugh with everyone. In Tyler ISD, we are committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and display of the Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD TV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System. Board members, I'd like to introduce you to Itzel Mahia, our Elementary Student of the Month. And we'd also like to say congratulations to our secondary student of the month, Dylan Welch. Dylan, will you please come forward? at Robert E. Lee High School for creating the artwork for this year's district Christmas card, and you can see Amy's talented work up here on the screen for you right now. Amy's artwork, by the way, was selected among many submissions from students across the district, so Amy, would you please come forward to be recognized tonight? Tonight, we also celebrate our district teacher of the month, Brandy Thompson, a fourth grade teacher at Clarkston Elementary School. Ms. Thompson is currently engaging her students in meaningful ways and goes above and beyond to help students and staff be successful. She builds relationships with her students, she encourages them to meet their goals and perform at their highest potential. Her expertise and dedication have pushed her students to make gains already this year. So congratulations to Ms. Thompson. And lastly, tonight, we would like to recognize Leon Ross and Terry Tompkins in the Maintenance Services Department for going above and beyond in assisting a visiting school district by noticing and repairing a spare tire on their trailer. Mr. Ross and Mr. Tompkins, would you please come forward? Thank you so much, gentlemen, and that completes our recognitions for this evening.
As everybody clears out of here, we'll get ready for our Pathfinder update. Yeah, Pathfinder is a pretty comprehensive portfolio that we have that includes our choice, our innovation, and our comprehensive school offerings that we have across the district. It also includes other things that we can provide updates on for the district as far as programming goes. In this video, you're going to see an update on the Pathfinder Expo that we recently held at the Career Technology Center. The opportunities that exist in Tyler ISD are growing to the point to where certainly what's on our radar next is our dual-language programming through the middle years as well. That kind of cuts off at grade five. We don't pick up with Spanish instruction until grade eight again. That's the one thing that's on our radar, along with elementary STEM education as well. So here's our highlights from the Pathfinder Expo for the board to view.
It was an afternoon full of smiles, songs, and Santa as Tyler ISD hosted its second annual Pathfinder showcase.
It's pretty great, it's amazing. There's a lot to see, a lot of things for kids, they love it, they love the cotton candy and popcorn, they love to see all the events.
Families also had an opportunity to learn more about the Tyler ISD Pathfinder program and the power to choose your path, whether that be in a fine arts or STEM magnet program, innovative college, career, or military-focused environment, or a traditional learning environment. Parents and students can choose their own learning experience.
We're excited to be here today at the second annual Pathfinder event. This event enables us to showcase our campuses, including the special types of campuses we have that allow families to have choice. What an empowerment it is to have families who are able to choose certain pathways for their kids that might align to their gifts and talents.
Around 1,000 visitors stopped by the holiday event. Children enjoyed many arts and crafts projects, a wide variety of STEM-based activities, and fun outdoor games.
Tyler ISD's Pathfinder showcase is a great time for families to come out and enjoy face painting, bounce houses, food. It's a free admission, I think that's a huge perk behind the families being able to come out. They get to go to booths and see their teachers and principals, and see artwork and showcases. So I think it's a great event to come out and have extremely fun for the holidays.
Many live performances from students all across the district brought in the festive spirit with music and song. Thank you to the many district departments and community partners who provided treats and activities for our guests. Our career and technology students also made a special day by creating a warm and festive backdrop for Santa's visits with the children young and those young at heart.
Merry Christmas!
Board, you know, the showcase that we, it's our second annual showcase that we want to continue every year, really does provide an opportunity for our community to come and see what we do have. I mean, some of the things that I really noticed this year was Rice Elementary and their STEM lab that they actually provided at the showcase, and you heard from Mr. Markle on there about the great things that are happening at Caldwell. Remember, next year, grade eight starts to realize our vision of a K-8 arts magnet, which from what I hear is going to be the truly, only, the only true arts magnet in East Texas next year, as some other school districts are consolidating their arts programs back into their regular elementaries. More MST magnet has been successful for 20 years and something that we're very proud of Mr. Lane and his staff has accomplished. And of course, the Career Technology Center that we have there is an incredible facility that our, that our community and our public has provided us certainly a great resource, a great tool for instruction for our teachers to deliver learning for our children. Certainly, there are things that we can do better, but we want to show that we are competing. We're never going to criticize a parent's choice for their, for their education of their child, but certainly, we are here to get better, we're here to recognize that we are a player in educating the youth of Smith County, and we're doing an excellent job of it, and hopefully in the years to come that this event will actually grow just like it did from last year to this year. Okay, thank you. Do I have any comments or questions about Pathfinder?
Yep, I do. You mentioned some of the things that are on the radar. Can you give us just a rough outline of the timeline where we may learn more about that or what your decision points are?
Yeah, I would, you know, we'd prefer to have these things to y'all in October, but it just seems more pressing that the dual-language beginning in sixth grade is something that's really pressing on us. Certainly, we can't do a district-wide program, but if someone wants to continue in that immersion program, whether they're native English speakers or native Spanish speakers, and they've really adopted that well from maybe a campus like Birdwill, it's something that we really want to consider. Whether or not where we locate that is something that's going to wind up being something we need to flesh out here in the next couple of months. Certainly, at Caldwell, we already have the middle school programming that's already there, so we're already paying for that cost. Whether or not we boot that up at another campus or a similar model is something that the CFO and I are going to have to really take a look at, because I think we got the staff to be able to pull that off. It's whether or not we're going to be able to house that and locate that so that those kids can actually get that grade six, seven, and eight curricular requirements the state requires of us. Right now, we're trying to bite that off for this, for this semester, or this coming semester, so that we can maybe start that program next year. Down the road, there are certainly some things that we are interested in maybe going after. I don't think that we'll wind up doing any type of year-round school situation here for this coming year, but it is something we need to take a hard look at in planning for some of the pockets of our communities to where that would make an impact on a child's education. There is some additional dollars that will be available from the state if you decide to do some creative summer programming. We'll talk about that here later, whenever we talk about the calendars, because the two calendar options, one addresses that, that we have to do in order to be able to maximize the funding there. So those are the things that are kind of heavy on our, on our, on our radar right now. The dual-language certainly is something that we're already doing. We, you know, we dabbled in Mandarin Chinese as far as an immersion goes on there, didn't find a lot of interest there, but we certainly have some, we've done our research and we've actually put that on the shelves if we ever want to start a Mandarin immersion, Mandarin immersion program as well.
One final question. Moving to a choice program like this is a significant communication burden for the district. You no longer just have to know where you live, therefore where you go to school, but you have to keep track of all the options that are available. How are you feeling about just the overall participation in Pathfinder and any, any changes to strategy there that you're contemplating?
Yeah, I think the one thing is, is, you know, generation and historical comfort is something to overcome. While we are trying to bust through some of those traditions that just the regular traditional comprehensive school is the only thing for my child, is something that we've got to get over. I think that the programming and the outcomes speak for themselves, especially if you're going to get in one of these more rigorous programs. If you start talking about our AP scores, where we outperform our charter and our private and our public peers in 19 out of 26 of those AP exams, I think the more we can capitalize on those like we have in the past, I think that's something that certainly you can't argue with. So communication is certainly a, and marketing is certainly a need for us. Ms. Hines, our new executive director of communications, has brought forward some strategies. Don't want to give those strategies away in regard to some of the things that we can do community-wide to be able to market and attract some of our folks to come here. So absolutely, it's just one of those things that I think you gotta, as time goes on, as the outcomes are there, we love that. This Pathfinder is one of the things that we, we really advertise, and I know this year we spent a little bit of money actually doing some, I don't know what you call it besides, on the social media?
Social media advertising.
Social media advertising, something we really hadn't done a lot of since then. I don't know what the return was on that for this year. So I think there's some strategies, certainly some things that we can do better.
Anything else? I do believe part of a thriving district is having good choice programs and being competitive in those, so look forward to seeing that come along. Okay, moving on to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
We approve the minutes for November 5th and November 18th.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Okay, gifts and donations. Across our school system, Mr. Washman, we, there's a lot of equity in our, in our community investing in our campuses, able to provide different opportunities for funding and resources that goes back to our kiddos that we may not normally provide in our normal routine budget that our taxpayers provide us. But I'm here proudly to, to put in front of the board for action, $5,000 each at both Dixie and Jones Elementaries, provided by their, their, their great schools there, so their PTAs there. So we are certainly proud of that. Is it, I'm sorry, it was Dollar General.
Dollar General.
Dollar General. I didn't write that down, but I remembered that. It's Dollar General. Certainly, our businesses and our community members here investing in our schools is something that I think they're going to see a return on as they provide outstanding opportunities for our students.
Okay, yeah, that's exciting news. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the donations from Dollar General.
Second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are moving along to superintendent and staff reports.
Page 67 and 101 of your packet are your quarterly investment reports, quarterly financial executive summary, as we did a quarter ago. Feel free to contact Tasha Bjork if you have any questions about either one of those. Certainly, the economy still continues to work well for us, and we were able to certainly take our taxpayer dollars that we can invest and do that at a low risk but a very high yield amount for us. It's going to pay dividends on us for our, our construction program as we move forward, wrapping those up here in the next 18 months, and we're able to take those investment dollars and roll that back into programming for, for both Robert E. Lee and John Tyler High School construction projects.
Okay, any questions or comments about superintendent staff reports? You can direct them to Tasha if you have them. Okay, moving on to our discussion item, which is the district calendar for 2021 school year. It's our first reading.
Those centered around AP exams that are being proctored, along with the return of end-of-course results for our graduating students. And we apologize for undershooting those dates there. It might have caused some rescheduling of some things within family households. I know it did in mine as I have a senior as well, and I got to hear about it this weekend from relatives that have conflicts with other nephews and nieces that are graduating. But we certainly need to be able to graduate our kids. We've got to meet the state requirements, and that's why we moved those back one more week. So we'll certainly communicate that out where we can. In front of you, you have two different calendar options. One on a traditional 176-day instructional calendar here on the left side of your packet. On the right side of your packet, it's the actual 180-day calendar that we have there. I spoke somewhat to this in our Pathfinder that that 180-day calendar is something that we, by statute, would consider for adoption if we wanted to access after the school year programming for the summer. My team over there's got a little bit more expertise than I do about this because they're tasked with doing that, but the rules have just barely -- they're pretty fresh. They barely came out on the 180-day calendar. The 180-day calendar, if you go to those 180 days, what we would give up instead of starting the school year extremely earlier than what we want on a 176-day calendar is I believe that some of our professional development days would have to be adjusted. Is that correct, team?
That is correct.
Okay. We will try to protect the start and the end dates as best we can. Is that correct, team? Somewhere around there? Okay, good. You know, our covenant with the community when we went District of Innovation was that if we could, with our goal of ending prior to Memorial Day, was that we wouldn't start extremely early. There's a lot of school systems that are starting that first or second week of August. We're trying not to do that, so we're going to try to protect that, but what we would have to do is give up on some of our professional development. Can I give you a recommendation right now of whether or not the 180 versus the 176 is worth it because of that? No. But we wanted to certainly get to this first reading. We'll have a recommendation for you by the time we get to, I guess, January or February. We're just going to have to work through that right now. Anything else we need to talk to them about, Mr. Jones, on that, without me having to go through the entire calendar? What are some things we protected that are valuable to the staff?
You mentioned the start time. The 180-day calendar starts on the 17th, and the 176 starts on the 19th, so that's still in that same timeframe. And yeah, we protected our breaks, Thanksgiving break, Christmas break. We protected those. And as you mentioned, whereas students will get out before Memorial Day on the 180 degree, 180 day. Yeah, that just comes with that. 180-day calendar, the staff would go over inclement weather days into June, June 7th, but that's about it.
Yeah. You know, it's almost like we're married to a week at Thanksgiving, a week, two weeks at Christmas, and a week at spring break. And those nine-day breaks, those 16-day breaks that are in the calendar, you know, we really appreciate the board considering -- I'm speaking on behalf of our teachers. I don't think administrators would care for that much time off. At least, that's what y'all tell me, right? But in saying that, you know, our teachers are pretty protective that when they get into our calendar committee, that advisory, that is something that they always go into to get out before Memorial Day and then the actual, those breaks. Certainly, instruction is the most important piece of this, and we've been able to maximize that as much as we can. I do still want to sit here and emphasize to the board, I think the 180-day calendar is an opportunity for us for the funding. Dr. Hanson described that the funding is about, it's half ADA, but that's better than what we have if we don't access it. Right now, we're going to spend half a million dollars approximately more this year with rosette, for rosette summer camps. If you were to go 180 days, that half of your ADA would actually come back to the district for the kids that participate during the summer so that we could actually increase those numbers in the end. So we're still studying that. Just wanted to give you all a little bit of an appetizer in regard to that 180-day calendar. The one thing we're really concerned about, about the way the statute's written, about the rulemaking that comes out of the agency, is that you cannot deviate from compulsory requirements. In other words, if you were to go to a 180-day calendar, school year calendar, if you wanted to go to a school-wide calendar and use that to your advantage, this 180-day calendar, it would only look like the BoeShears calendar. And y'all are familiar with the BoeShears calendar. The BoeShears calendar doesn't add any additional days. It's pretty much the same amount of instructional days, just spread out over the year differently. And while there's probably some benefit to that, it is not more time with the curriculum. It's just, it's just spread out a little differently. So we're still studying that. I don't think that right now I could give you a recommendation one way or the other. If we could, if one of the options were to come up with, to design some of these extended year programs or year-round schools, and we knew for certain that we'd be able to access those, there's no doubt that the 180-day calendar for instruction would be my recommendation. But right now, it's pretty ambiguous, and it doesn't seem like it's real. I don't think that we really did design statute to be able to say that we're going to help these students where we can. It's more for summer programming like we're doing already.
Okay, well, I'm sure there'll be questions about that calendar, but we'll look it over.
Team, y'all have anything you need to add on this before we close this out? What about any of the executive directors out there? Do y'all got anything to add on this? Okay, thumbs up.
Well, I can assure you that the school administrators are happy to have these days as well.
I know. Hey, what a great profession that we truly are a part of. And I think sometimes we take for granted that, you know, the two and a half months that we do get to recharge in the summer for our teachers and our campus staff, what other profession in the world can you do that? But at the same time, the trade-off there is to be able to impact the youth of our country, of our great state, of our great city.
Right.
And teach them and give them the academic skills to be successful later on in life. So there's a good trade-off on there. I know there's that debate out there in the community about teachers have all this time off, and I sometimes make jest of it, but it's well-earned. It is a tough, tough profession, and we really encourage our teachers to work as hard as they possibly can with the understanding that they've got these little breaks coming up. So very, very well-earned, Reverend Mason. You're correct.
Very well put. Moving on to future business.
Future business, we have upcoming break coming up in case anybody didn't just hear me talk about that, but the district offices will be closed beginning at, I don't know, 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock Friday, this Friday, all the way to January the 6th. Is that correct? Yeah, we'll open back up for instruction that day. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone as we celebrate this. Then we also have our next board workshops on January 16th, and then January 23rd is our actual regular school board meeting. Remember, we back those up in January for two different reasons. One being that we get back a little bit in a hurried way from the holiday break, plus Martin Luther King Day is also in there as well, to which the district does recognize and observe.
Okay. Well, that time of the meeting has come. May I have a motion for adjournment?
I so move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Here we go.